Lights on. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 1st meeting of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Newton. Sorry for the couple, a few minute delay. It is now 6:10. We will open up with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. The Board just came out of a non-public session. I would like somebody to make a motion to seal the minutes, please.
Make a motion to seal the minutes in non-public of August 1st, 2023.
RSA 91-A colon 3-C and A.
Yes.
Could I make a friendly amendment to that motion? So I would move that the Board just came out of a non-public meeting under RSA 91-A, what did you just say, 3-C and A?
Yep.
And I motion that we should seal the minutes until such time as the majority of the Board agrees that it is no longer prudent. Period.
Seconded.
You're good with that?
Yep.
Seconded.
Yep. Well, seconded.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
And just so everybody knows, Mr. Guy was with us earlier in the non-public. Unfortunately, he was feeling a little bit under the weather, so he elected to go home rather than sit up here and suffer with the rest of us.
I didn't know you could do that. You can do that. If you're sick, you can leave.
If you're sick.
I don't remember.
We highly suggest it.
You, Matt, have to put a request form in.
Oh, jeez.
However, okay, so now that that's all done, as Chairman of the Board, I would like to reach out. The Fire Chief of Atkinson has passed away the past couple days ago, and the town of Newton would like to extend, on the family's behalf, our sorrow and our grief for them in their time of need and what they're going through. Mr. Murray was of sale in New Hampshire. He died Sunday in Pittsburgh, New Hampshire area. He leaves behind a wife and a daughter, so our thoughts and our prayers are with both of them and the rest of his family, and God bless him.
Do we want to have a moment of silence?
Yes, and we will now have a one-minute moment of silence, please. All right. Supervisor of the vote, a checklist. We had a little issue with that, and Jim's going to address that.
Yes, we've already appointed Mr. Hello to be supervisor of the checklist, board checklist. However, it's the remaining two members that do the screening and make the appointment. That's in the works. Tony's aware of it. He knows what's going on, so we just, we jumped the gun, basically.
Yep.
It was all well-intentioned. Do you live and you learn?
Just trying to keep positions filled. Getting too many open at this point. With that, appointment to...
Newton PD.
Yeah, Newton Police Department of Christian King. Pre-employment conditions. The chief has said that he's ready to rock and roll and to start doing some work for the town. However, right now, he's in training in the academy, so once he completes the academy, then he'll be able to be of service of the town. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I will move to appoint Christian King to the position of patrolman with the Newton Police Department. This is a provisional appointment until the police chief is satisfied that all pre-employment conditions have been satisfactorily met, followed by a probationary period consistent with the town policy.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Remove and add signers on trustee of the trust fund's bank account.
I can make this motion, so it looks like just some record-keeping, given that people are moving around. So I move to instruct the North Shore Bank to remove Joseph Simoni and Ashley McKee as authorized signers for the town and to add Elizabeth Walker and Nancy Kozlowski as authorized signers on accounts under the control of the new trustees of the trust funds.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Point of note, I would like to also make, I noticed that one of our selectmen was still using that email address for the trustee of the trust funds that I received, and that you might want to check into that.
That's a general thing. It went to everybody, so it has to be changed.
But it came from your thing, right? From trustee of the trust fund, not as a selectman. Yeah, so you might want to check into that.
Somehow, somewhere.
So I just want to make a note of that.
We thought we had changed it a long time ago.
All right, well, I noticed that when I looked at the email. It came from trustee of the... So let's, like I said, we'll address that and take care of that. Okay, now that that's all set, citizens input. Anybody got anything good to say? We don't want to hear anything bad. We've had more than enough bad news lately. Step up. Let us know who you are and where you live, please.
I'm Bob Schultz. I live at 18 Kenwood. I have a telephone pole that belongs to the electric company that has never been turned on. That development was specked by, when I bought the house, by the original builder, to have sidewalks and telephone, light poles throughout. Mine's the only place with a light pole. The pole belongs to the electric company. The fixture belongs to the town. We've been trying to get through to somebody to get it taken down. There's no reason for it to be there. It's an eyesore in my front yard. It's never been turned on, and I bet you have no intention of turning it on. So I would like somebody to make a motion to get that off my yard. It's a matter of contacting Unitil. They have all the information, the electric company, and they need authorization from a town selectman or a person of proper authority.
Very good.
Would you address?
18 Kenwood.
That would be...
Right on the corner of Story.
Could you say that as a motion? I will follow up with the electric company. I have been assured that it will cost the town nothing to have it removed. There was a little bit of a debate whether we would have to foot the bill or not, and there's no cost.
So I would make a motion that we give the town administrator the authority to connect with the utility company to come up with a remedy for this matter.
That would be great.
I'll be in touch.
I'm sorry?
I'll be in touch.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. Thank you.
Yep, so just contact Jim. He's usually in, so when he tries to get hold of you, you'll be in on, what, Tuesdays usually?
I'll be in tomorrow.
All right, well, tomorrow.
I'll be in touch.
I have everything that I need. I'll just contact Jamie myself.
You are familiar with the situation.
Yeah, I'll contact Jamie myself and have him process it. I know he's not in the department that would remove it, but he was in that department, so he understands it.
Cool.
So keep patient.
I appreciate your help.
Okay, so we had the motion. Did I have a second? Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. You're welcome. Thank you for coming today. It's not a problem.
All right.
All right, any other citizens input? I love it when they're quick and easy like that. Administration, unanticipated revenue.
We received a check late last week from the Rockingham County Department of Corrections. The amount is $16,860.04. That reflects restitution paid to Rockingham County to be paid to us in the matter of the state of New Hampshire v. Lynn Bergeron. It is a public document. It is a sentencing order. Because of the amount, it exceeds $5,000. You're required to have a public hearing, and it has to be posted in the newspaper 10 days before the hearing takes place. So Robin and I worked on an ad to go in the carriage news for the next issue, which I think is on the 10th, and we're just announcing to everyone that you're going to hold a public hearing embedded in your agenda at your next meeting on the 10th. 15th, I'm sorry, on the 15th.
Yep, two weeks.
So there's no motion, no action. It's purely informational, but the next meeting, you'll take that.
There's one we'll address it and take care of it. Very good. Thank you, Jim. Highway phone number. I know we had had a bunch of issues with that, and we finally resurrected that by getting a new phone number for the highway department.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Robin and the road agent worked diligently on this in the middle of last week, and the new phone number for the folks at home is 603-974-1459, and you can leave a message, and the road agent will get it. I don't know whether he's going to respond or not, but he'll get it.
Do we want to, do we want to just give everybody his cell number? Or have everybody...
So thank Robin and Mike for working on that, and maybe that's a source of frustration that will go away in some residents.
Yep, very good. And again, that whole issue came up because we had updated some other equipment and made that other phone number non-viable because it wasn't able to operate with the new equipment. So now we have the new number. We're all set. Staff reports. Cellular tower update.
He actually liked it when they couldn't reach him. Only kidding, everybody, in TV land. Okay, so you've heard us talk about cell towers and communication and reception. I'm going to read a little something. A little of it is personal, but it's just to drive home the importance of this, which I feel like I'm preaching to the choir anyway. But I sent the proposal for the tower over to you last Thursday, as required by our policy to get on this agenda. Hence, that's why I'm here. I hope you had a chance to review it. The chief and I can answer questions, but let me tell you the steps that we've taken so far regarding this tower. Let me start out by saying, public safety, obviously, first responders and highway that put their lives on the line every day need reliable communication. Today, in the interest of interoperability and cost justification, we are seeing that not only are the Newton residents at risk, but our first responders are at risk. For the fire, police, EMS, highway, and EMD departments, our primary responsibility is that everyone relies on life safety to be reliable and communicate between each other. There have been times when I have had to work the radio at the fire station during an event and relay communication between police, fire, and our highway because they couldn't hear each other. That's so serious. We even took the time to try the man-down button, the mayday button, and the silent emergency button, and not one other department in this area, nor Rock Dispatch, heard us. That was really scary. The town of Newton is in a position to provide life safety communications at no cost to the residents by installing a cell tower. In addition to this, it will allow for public safety radios to function better because we're going to be on top of the tower. This will also provide revenue for the town because the tower will allow other cell companies to get space below public safety, which will be at the top. The income from the various spots as they go down the tower, it's going to start out with the first spot below public safety. All the revenue from that will go to this company that's doing this install at no cost to us. Then the next spot down, any income that comes in, revenue of any kind, the town's going to get 25% of it down to the bottom tier. I think there's five spots that might be including us, but the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, and the last spot, only 15% would come back to the town. Currently, our repeated infrastructure is our weakest link. The chief and I worked with the tower company, and we drove all over the town. We checked 16 possible locations of town-owned property, and we were able to narrow down the three best locations to provide the best communication. And the idea with the radio people, because that's who the chief was with, was to find the places where we had no communication. And clearly, if we could put a tower there, that's going to help. It'll hit another repeater, and hopefully, nobody will be wondering why no one's answering them. So we did come down with three locations for the best results, and we're fortunate that this will, even if we had to put a repeater over at the one we currently have, it will bounce and talk to that repeater, and hopefully, police, fire, highways in the same boat, for them to be able to talk to each other. You probably know, you've heard me say this on a personal note, I'm really passionate about this. I was a police officer. I've been in everybody's shoes, our first responder, and know what it's like to wonder, is anyone hearing you? And to take it a step further, my dad was a state policeman, and while on duty supervising a search in a pond for two little toddlers, a lightning, thunder, and lightning storm started. He was hit by lightning, and his partner was yelling for mayday help, and nobody heard. So I'm clearly, clearly wrapped up in this. Every time we hear our men, women, highway, anyone asking for assistance, I like have flashback. So I think I've covered, I gave you the proposal. The chief, if I've left anything out, he can come up. Do you have any questions about what I've said or what I sent you on Thursday, or Robin sent you on Thursday?
We're not moving forward until the Board blesses this. This is kind of the intro.
Right.
Which is really not an intro because we've done this like three months ago.
Right.
But it takes a lot of work to look at all the town property, 16 pieces, find out which one's the most advantageous to cure our communication issue. So we will be coming back to you again, and any type of agreement requires your approval. It would probably include leasing the land to the cell company. For cost or not, we might be just grateful to have that emergency communication. So there's like work still to be done, but this is just great news. Great news.
Is there a preliminary site that's better than the others? Or is it...
There is.
There is.
There is. Just...
We hesitate to say it thrusters, but you can, I guess, huh?
Just to touch quick, the project manager of the fire station brought up many years ago about a cell tower. This is, the reason I moved it through the EOC is just because I've tried this twice, and this has failed twice. That's the reason why there's a coupla at the fire station, just the project manager's here, and the fire department had to pay for all the communications in there. Okay? As Trish put, these three ideal spots, they're on town land, there is no cost at all to the town of Newton. All it is, is a major benefit to the town of Newton. It's a win-win for the town of Newton. It is public record where they're talking about going, so it's real simple. One is the transfer station, town property.
Behind the transfer station lot itself.
They already have 240 down there. They'll supply everything that needs to get done. The other one is Amesbury Road and Bear Hill Road. And if need be, one would be down on Whitty Street, near the, I'm sorry, near the cemetery. Okay? It's beneficial to the residents because it's cell coverage. That is a dead spot, that whole area for cell coverage. So again, it's a win all around and no cost to the taxpayers. And the intent, since it's going to be public safety, would be, hopefully, the Board would form a revolving account, and the revenue would go into public safety. So the departments do not have to constantly increase our budget to purchase communications. The tower would take care of that revenue, you could say. Okay? And like I said, we just, this has been in the works since 2016? Since 2016. I know some probably didn't realize that, but we have stood up at this podium, the guy over here to my right stood up at this podium and said the same thing. We lost twice due to how bad the communication is in this town, and I've been complaining about that for nine years. You have it in documentation about we have communication issues. I'm talking to Jim, Trish, the road agent, the police chief. Now is the time. So I reached out to the company, put them in contact with Trish to get this ball rolling. So...
At the request of Jim also.
Correct.
My only question...
I'm sorry.
I just have one question. You said, hopefully, this will cure the problem. Have we tested it? Do we know? Like, we're going to...
Yep.
When we went out, Mike, we did test the communication without physically putting antenna up. We know it's going to help the cell coverage. That's guaranteed, hands down, no doubt.
Okay.
Radio communication, the game plan would be for them. Right now, the town's repeater, you could say, for the town channel, not the police frequency, the fire frequency, the town repeater is on South Main Street on the bottom of the tower, which the town does not have an ordinance. I'd recommend the Board in the future, talk to planning board, anybody that wants to put a tower. This is the only town I know that don't have an ordinance. When a tower goes in, top 10 feet is public safety. We're on the bottom. Doesn't, it works, but it doesn't work that good. This would improve that town repeater, hands down, because you're going from ground level up 180 feet.
Yeah, I'm more worried about the public safety than the...
That is public safety.
No, that's what I'm saying. I got everybody's going to be happy with the cell coverage, that...
Correct. Well, we don't have, public safety don't have cell coverage once you get down Amesbury Row, that whole section down there anyways. Right now, we're using cell coverage.
Hold on, Joe, if I could jump in here. So you said something, since 2016?
Correct.
You're talking that it's been a problem that has been talked about since 2016, right? Because we've never talked, I'll say never, I'll probably eat my words, we've never talked about a cell tower since I've been on the Board.
I can tell you this, and the project manager is sitting on the side of me.
Yeah.
I personally, with the project manager, sent the proposal that looks almost identical to what you have in front of you, the two-town hall road. Where it went from there...
Okay, fine, yeah, that's cool.
Okay, where it went from there, the difference was, that first proposal, other than revenue, clearly stated that all emergency communication for the public safety complex would be purchased by the company.
So I guess what I want to leave here, I want to be clear to everybody, because as I, how many, Mike, millions of viewers now? Are we up to millions? This, we're talking, we're talking about this at a concept level tonight.
Correct.
So I am in favor of the concept. There's still a lot of questions. We could ask questions all night right now if we wanted to. It makes sense. You say win-win. To me, it's a win-win. There's going to be a lot of people in town are going to hear a cell tower, and it's not win-win to them. So that's why I want to be clear. Tonight, this Board is not voting to do this. We're voting in favor of the concept to do more investigation, more planning, and go through the steps that anybody else would. I personally would feel, I believe there's a statute that says you don't have to go to the planning board if it's a town structure. Just going on record right now, I think we should socialize with the planning board. We should still go to the planning board, just so people can come and people can state their thing. So I'll stop talking now, but I want all of our millions of viewers to understand, we did not just vote to build a cell tower.
Matt doesn't want his phone blowing up.
Exactly.
Well, 10 minutes ago, there was a new phone number that was given out. I think everybody should call that phone number, personally.
Any issues whatsoever, really, that's the newest line you'll get through the clearest.
I agree with you. This is just the baby steps. If the Board is interested, we'll progress forward. Again, this is twice, this will be the third time. If the Board's not interested, I'll call them up tomorrow, tell them, hey, thank you, have a good day.
We're interested. Let's pursue it.
Oh, sorry, any other questions for any of us?
Nope. Not right now.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Nothing prevents the Board from holding a public hearing on the topic. So the planning board is an opportunity to air it and see how the community's reacting, but I really believe it's of the magnitude that you should hold a public hearing, even though you don't have to, because it gives people an opportunity to be heard.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I mean, we give them the opportunity. Some of us who are regulars know that those public hearings, we have plenty of seats available.
We're the ones that are here.
But we have a detailed record of the announcement, so if somebody talks to us, as they commonly do, three months down the line and say, why didn't I know about this? We say, well, you had the opportunity.
When should we schedule a public hearing? When should we schedule a public hearing?
Oh, it's way too soon, but there's a lot of preliminary work that needs to be done. I don't think a document should go in front of the Board that hasn't been reviewed by town council.
Right.
And blessed and changed according to what he feels is in the best interest of you.
Yep. And you're standing there like you're going to come up for an ARPA, an EOC, and conservation update, my dear.
I was just waiting for the invitation. Okay, and this is fairly quick. I did speak to Chief Jewitt on multiple occasions. We are still anxiously waiting for more information about the security cameras for Town Hall, Beach, Gale Library, Granny Park, and Town Hall. We'll let you know, again, when we finalize any information. Working on, I've spent a lot of time working on grants, so potential grants, working on a municipal solar grant. I'm getting more information updated because ARPA has been down this committee, down this road before, and I'm going to get new presentation and new prices for you, so I'll give you that next time around. EOC, Homeland Security has asked the EMDs to submit damage assessments from the rain events during the month of July. Photos, Mike and I, we've talked about this. I've driven around, I've taken photos showing areas where we've got shoulder washouts, even some of our town parking lots that have had severe water damage. Homeland Security is still trying to compile the costs to see if Rockingham County meets the threshold. I haven't heard anything. Have you? No? Okay. During the last two weeks, the hot, humid weather, I've taken the time to check on residents that could have issues, heat-related. In some cases, I've assisted them by going out and buying fans or picking up fans that they bought because they... bought because they couldn't pick them up and carry them themselves. I offered to open up the cooling center. Everybody seemed to be okay, so knock on wood for that. I'm reminding everyone in TV land, all you thousands of people, that during our weather-related events, if you really do need something or you find you need some help and you don't know who to call, please call 382-1610. If you get voicemail, because I'm not always there, leave a message. You can also go on the website and get my phone number. I should give you his. My cellphone is 978-360-4152 if you need anything. And lastly, the town administrator has asked me to work on, you know, on bundling our fuel consumption for all our town buildings. I've been working really closely with Matt from Sandburn School. We've got some fabulous numbers, huge savings for our budgets. I can't quite share it with you yet that yet, but as soon as I do, I'll share it with the town administrator, and he will share it with you, but it's a good amount of money that we're going to save. And conservation, we don't meet till next week, so I really don't have anything to update right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Trish. Just one quick thing. When you have your public hearing, the contractor that's making that proposal that you have, I think it's Netcom, will be up to answer any board questions or any public questions.
Cool.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah. Good evening, Board. Mike Povero, road agent. Before I get into the 2003 paving schedule, serious note, I know my new phone number's been thrown out there multiple times tonight. For most residents that may or may not know, leave a message at the highway department. There's nobody ever in there. We're out in the field. There's one highway employee. If it's an emergency, call the PD. They have ways of getting in touch with us, but if you call the highway department, it's going on a voice machine, and I might not get it for days. I'm just being honest. It's kind of the way it goes. So emergency, something that's need to be addressed, you know, time-sensitive, call the PD, they'll get us. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a little bit late this year. This is the 2023 paving proposed schedule. The reason why it's coming in a little bit late, two issues. One, we had a little bit of a challenge deciphering what we actually had for funds available this year. We've rectified that. Robin's helped, Jim's helped. We've had help through the departments to get a handle on what we have for funding. Two other things that have been a problem this year, weather, obviously, paving schedules are going kicking down the road, kicking down the road, kicking down the road. I'm going to propose a contractor here in a few minutes because he's been really great to the town. He's extended his contract prices from last year to this year, which is a win.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can I jump in here?
Go ahead.
Okay, so you have a quote for paving? Is that what?
We have a quote for paving.
Okay. When did we get that?
Oh.
Haven't gotten it yet?
No, we've gotten, I've gotten it.
Do we have it?
You guys don't.
Do we have it for the board to review?
No, you guys don't have it to review. No, do you want to kick this down to another meeting?
I don't want to kick it down to another meeting, and I'm sorry not to put you on the spot, but.
No, I'm fine.
Feeling like a broken record, because we're trying to stay true to the Thursday before the meeting, we have everything we need to review, especially if it's a quote that we need to spend money on. Now, the reality is understood that it's very difficult to get these quotes right now. Everybody's busy, and we certainly are probably going to move forward with this. But I just think to, in fairness, and obviously presented to us, but in fairness, because we've told other department heads that they need to get us stuff before the meetings, I think we need to stay true to that. Am I the only one?
No.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, cool.
You still want the proposal?
Yeah, go ahead.
You want to meet till the next meeting?
Let it rip.
Okay. This may shed some light on what you were asking by the time I get to the end of the story. So the areas that we were intending to pave this year, one, and the first one is Gale Village Road, which was actually scheduled for 2018 and was put off due to, I'm going to say, scheduling and approval to do that road. I think some of the selectmen here know exactly what I'm talking about. But we got that rectified last year, being able to take down trees and do everything else to widen that road up. So that's area one, and it was mostly approval issues because it was supposed to be done in 2018. The second one is Wentworth Drive. That wasn't originally scheduled for this year, but has deteriorated so poorly that it will not survive the winter. It just won't. Now, to do both of those areas, the quotes I had, I needed, the cost would be about $290,000. I don't have $2,090, $2,000, yeah, $290,000. I don't have that kind of funds. Back to your issue, Matt, I didn't completely get an accounting on what I had available done until Saturday. So all of these proposals were a waste of time until I knew what I had for funding. Funding available right now that I can use this season is $187,000. That's between my line item and my highway block grants. You can see there's a deficit between the 290 and the 187, so I cannot do the necessary work that I need to do this year. So I've gotten a little creative here with Bell and Flynn, and we're going to reclaim, as long as the proposals go through, we're going to reclaim Courierville Road and put the binder down this season. We're going to do the same thing on Wentworth Drive. Reclaim it, put binder down. It'll have to be topped the next year. To top that road will be about $133,000, which will bring us to about the 290. My problem is, again, and not to segue down the road, most of the projects I do in town take me two years to complete because I don't have enough funding. So it's just a cycle that I can't break. But in order to get those roads in condition where they're passable and usable during the winter, those will need to be done this year, but it'll only be binder. I think that's, really, yeah, pretty simple.
Any questions?
So we will have company names, contact information, what they proposed per foot? Is that?
No, it's tonnage price.
Tonnage, okay.
Yeah.
And what the price is, you'll have a matrix to look at, and Mike's recommendation should carry some weight in the room. There are things such as past experience, good and bad, that should be taken into consideration. Also, we're really late, and they start cutting back in the fall, and they work from cold work down because it's colder up there first than it is down here. So we could see ourselves waiting a little September or so.
Yeah, and I'm not going to put any pressure on the board. It is what it is. If we miss the paving season this year, the roads will stay the way they are. And I couldn't expedite this because, again, not to sound like a broken record, I had no idea what I had for funds. So until I knew what I had for money, I can't schedule work.
Right.
And that was an accounting issue. It had nothing to do with the highway department. That was an accounting issue.
I'm well aware of it.
Okay, as long as you guys are. I don't want anybody to think the highway department can't do basic mathematics. That had nothing to do with it.
Yeah. So for anybody that, we can put it out there that the state went about distributing the funds to the towns to help, and they did it in a different way, so it wasn't that accessible for us. So we had to go into great lengths to be able to find the figures, the amounts, and all that to track it down, like Mike's talking about, so that he knew exactly what he was dealing with, so he could calculate what he would be able to do, as he just stated, with the different roads, to be able to at least get some of them addressed and ready to deal with the winter that's coming up. So.
I have a question.
Yep.
Mike, can we speak to Merrimack, Mass. to see if they want to do any work on that road too? Isn't that the town line?
Yeah, it is, but we're not going into Mass. We stopped right at the town line. Their section of Merrimack Road was done not too long ago. It's not in that bad condition. Yeah.
Sometimes the coordinated effort between communities can get the price down.
Oh, well, it happened last year. Kingston and Newton joined together and get the cost down, and actually Kingston covered the cost of mobilization when we did Country Pond Road.
Great.
Yeah, no, it was a win-win.
Yep.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to make a?
We'll have it on the agenda for ten.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Fifteen.
Fifteens.
What a block ahead.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, I can help you with that too.
I just want to make one comment about this for people in TV land. I'm sure all of you here realize this, but on the damage assessments that we're trying to work on with Homeland Security, part of it was because of the unexpected December 23rd storm in 2022, and then the March 14th election day storm, and that cut into his budget and everybody's budget tremendously. So if this damage assessment works, we can get some of that money back, but we're doubtful that, we don't think Rockingham County will make that threshold, but that took a huge hit to the highway budget.
Right. But even if you got that money, would it be eligible to be done this year? Like, how quickly would you know? Because I know the asphalt plants start to shut in sometime like.
November.
Is it November? Oh, it's that far out?
The work we're doing, the work they're scheduling, asphalt plants only have this much of impact in my world. It's the contractor.
Okay.
Once they bark and bark and bark and bark, then they're booked for the season, and the plants will stay open depending on the weather, but it'll be sometime in the middle of November.
Okay.
But I'm glad Trish brought that up, because that is an important thing, and she did mention the highway department. Because of those storms, the highway department took a total cost hit of $37,000. That's 10% of my entire budget was used on two storms that I didn't anticipate. So that's less work that we can do and blah, blah, blah. Thanks, Trish.
And if we reach the threshold that we can get reimbursed for those expenditures, we're not going to see them till next year anyway.
Yeah.
So you're in a different budget.
That's what I'm saying.
People don't think the state's sending the check out next week. They hold on to that money to collect more interest off of it.
Don't wait by the mailbox.
That's it. And then we had the fire chief wanted to come up. Who are you going to come up and do your report?
I think it's optional if he doesn't want to come up.
You know my friends? Got it, chief? All right.
Good evening. Just want to touch base for, forgive me, I do it all the time, forget glasses, but just want to touch for the month of July. Once again, a busy month. Total of 54 calls. The arrows follows, two building fires, 21 EMS calls, three hazmat, seven service calls, two good intent, five false alarms, one severe weather, 13 special incidents. With all that said, year-to-date, we've had 393 calls for service compared to 330 last year. The differences in those numbers, those numbers do not count burn permits, plan review, life safety review, all the rest of the stuff that the fire department does. So as you can see, the department's getting busier and busier. One of the big things that happened was on July 4th. At approximately 11:13 in the morning, the department was dispatched to 66th Donnell Road for reported basement fire. We had individuals in the station for the holiday. They were able to get on scene within three minutes and found that it was electrical fire due to overheated extension cords. If the crew wasn't there, you're looking at about 10 to 15 minutes for individuals to come from their house, to drive to the station, to get geared up, get in the trucks, and go. We're also doing, we started last month, as I put in my report, we started doing joint training with the surrounding mutual aid partners. We did last month, again, with the town of Kingston. This month, we're scheduled to do more water training on Country Pond with the Kingston boat and Newton's boat. Okay? The rest of it that I sent to you has to deal with EMS, the current contract. My recommendation with the current contract is, in lieu of the Atkinson chief passing away, he was, you could say, our liaison to Trinity, that you kind of take a step back. We do not know what Trinity is, I'm sorry, what Atkinson is going to do with EMS, from what I was told today. The interim chief actually works for Trinity. So I think that'd be a conflict. So my recommendation is hold off on the contract, the agreement. I mean, if the board wants to vote to accept the recommendation from your town council and move that forward, that's fine, but anything else other than staffing that station, I would hold off. Okay?
Point of interest, the chief and I had had the discussion, and the chief can elaborate on this, a week ago, week and a half ago, we're not even in the contract that they want to propose, but they were already basically doing the same thing that they want to do now in this contract. There was a severe motorcycle accident, was it in Hampstead or Atkinson?
Atkinson.
In Atkinson. The two ambulances responded to that motorcycle accident in Atkinson and left all those towns that are involved, us, Atkinson, Hampstead.
Past out Danville and Sandown.
On their own to do any responding during that time, that we were left to hold the bag to do it. So, you know, I have issues with that, like the chief was talking about, and I've thought about it, and not that we're doing anything about it today, but I'm putting it out there so that these millions of viewers can really start to gnaw on this, that spending $165,000 to throw, basically in my eyes, away to where we could be taking 165, let me say that number again, $165,000 in putting it to doing something useful and to get us to that target where we need to be, we have to think about that long and hard. So is there anything else, chief?
Well, I would strongly recommend that the board read page two of that that I will not bring up now. That was out of respect for my brother. But the board needs to think long and hard on what's going to happen March 1st of next year. You guys all get in the side. I said, I stood up here two weeks ago, and nobody has any idea, other than six fire chiefs, on the living blank that we've been living with for the past two years, because we know if this goes south, we're going to be the ones thrown underneath the bus. I can tell you that. All right? And like I said, out of respect for my brother, you guys need to make the right choice, just like every fire chief has to make the right choice for their community. Okay? And just read that back half, and you guys do what you want to do, but it has to be made public, how we guard here and what the taxpayers are going to be paying, in my opinion, on how unfair it is. Okay?
Yep. Thank you, chief. All right. We're going to go on to approvals, reconsideration, payroll manifest, motion. All right, we're gonna go on to approvals, reconsideration, payroll manifest, motion.
At your last meeting, the board voted to approve payroll. Pay date was 7/20/23. Unfortunately, the total was correct, but the identification of the ARPA portion of the payroll was off. The motion included $749.20 associated with ARPA administrative costs. It actually was $206.70. So we need you to reconsider your motion. Have this motion maker and a seconder withdraw their motion in favor of a new, brand-new motion.
Trish, I'm finding this a little hard to believe that these figures are wrong.
So I am going to rescind my motion from the last meeting. My second is not here, though. That's the only thing.
That was Dan?
Yeah. So I believe, I believe we can still press on with... Because my motion is essentially to rescind my motion, and I need a second on that motion.
Yeah, and takes his second away.
Yep, Joe seconded it. All right, so the motion's been rescinded.
Well, all in favor of...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're ready for a new motion, but it sounds like...
And that's, the only thing is, ARPA is very strict about us being transparent for what we spend. And so when I talked to Robin and Peyton, I needed to make it clear, I wish I got that much money, but I didn't get that much money. So we needed to correct it so that if I ever got audited, the correct information would be out there.
Yep.
Okay.
Cool. So I'm now gonna move to approve the payroll manifest in the amount of $56,638.27 for the pay period, July 2nd, excuse me, to July 15th, with a pay date of July 20th, 2023. The manifest includes $206.70 of ARPA administrative costs.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Matt. Veterans credit for 10-2-9-Dax-3 on the MAP.
I'll move to sign the Veterans Tax Credit for MAP. 10-2-9-3, beginning tax year 2023.
Second?
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we will now move on to the new manifest.
I see the, Mr. Chairman, I see the chief kinda standing there. That usually means he's getting something to say.
Okay, go ahead, Chief.
He's not stretching typically.
I'm busy looking down. Matt's looking out.
I thought yoga was gonna start.
I apologize. The brain is out there. I forgot to mention that Newton will be sending a delegation Saturday morning out of town to pay its respects. Okay, we're meeting at the fire station at 9:00 AM to head down. The other thing, on the other side of the coin, a couple of weeks ago, the board talked about an ambulance. We did go down and look at that ambulance that we lost. Even if we had it, it's way too small. You couldn't fit some of our residents that we transport in it. You have a different proposal there, as we stated. The funds to purchase it are either capital reserve, the EMS account, ARPA. The funds are there. The board has to seriously think about sitting down and signing an agreement. You could always, there's an escape clause in everything. Because the earliest, there's a few that are possible, spring to summer next year, fall to winter next year. If not, you're two years out. So the recommendation is for the board to sit down, review the proposal, put a John Hancock on it with a stipulation that, one, it's gonna be delivered, and, two, payment will be made at the time it's delivered, so you don't have to make payment now. So if anything changes, you're not gonna lose nothing. Okay, I sent that last week, the proposal for two of them, the two different ones. The recommendation is the Ford with a gas engine, so we don't have to deal with diesel and DEF and all that other maintenance stuff. Okay?
Thanks, Chief. All right, manifest. Joe, you up?
Yep. I move to approve the vendor manifest in the amount of $42,788.27 dated 5/1st, 2023.
Second?
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the vendor manifest in the amount of $63,431.82, dated July 25, 2023. Payments are from the retirement system.
Second?
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve, withdraw only the amount of $718.60 from the Capital Revolver Fund, account number 391292. Payment is for a few of the packet financial services invoices. The amount is $478.58 and $240.02, totaling $718.60.
Second?
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve a payroll manifest, the amount of $63,499.27, for the pay period July 16 through the 29, 2023, with a pay date of August 3, 2023. The manifest includes $335.89 in ARPA administrative costs.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve and accept the public meeting, public meeting minutes dated July 18, 2023, is written.
Second?
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Goals and objectives.
Yeah, I did not receive any feedback from anyone on the board regarding the code of ethics policy, so my suggestion is to tee that up for August 15th for approval.
Yep, I agree. Sounds good.
That's all.
So we'll get that on the agenda. Anything else?
Nada.
Good. Real quick before we adjourn, what's left in the ARPA funds at this point? Okay, roughly?
Roughly, maybe $152,000.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that being said, we...
To adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:07.
Thank you.
Thank you.